Michelle has always offered a hug to anyone. More credit should be given to her for her hard work and commitment. Her experience with all levels of learning and time management makes her a strong and great educator. She has overcome different obstacles in the classroom that I believe many others could not handle. Being a one-on-one special needs provider myself, I can firsthand say that removing Michelle from the district is not the direction that you want to go in. Michelle's always given the kids a way to smile, have fun, and break out of their shells during major social and educational developmental time of their lives. Michelle advocated for a karaoke machine. The kids loved having this opportunity and it fostered such a positive lunchtime environment. To this point, she would go above and beyond sending emails each week to parents in her class explaining and highlighting the news of their children's week. This is a crucial tool of communication as it speaks words for prompts that, you know, kids could talk to their parents about. We all live in a real fast-paced world. For Michelle to take this initiative to do and for the parents to have was something really great, and I really think it should actually be a requirement across the board for all teachers. Michelle has an energy that radiates and will truly be missed. I know that kids love returning to see her and Michelle will miss this and the opportunity for her to teach families of whom she has already had. As a friend of Michelle's and a Washington Township resident, I am really disappointed in understanding that the district has gone in a different direction with regards to Michelle. Parents deserve an explanation as we are left feeling uneasy about what other sudden changes the district will be making. This vague reasoning is not why I chose Long Valley Schools for my kids to be in this district. Just curious like what the direction is, how it's going to affect our children and the community. You know, for other non-tenured teachers and faculty, how is this explained to them? Just looking for more direction and explanations. Whatever's been done is done, but for someone as professional, hardworking, committed, and positive as Michelle, I feel that the administration should reconsider its evaluation especially so the same mistake is not made again in the future. I know this is a choice that the district will regret, and if there's something that can be learned and evaluated, we hope it can be done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real quick, just a reminder, if anybody could just try to be cognizant of keeping it within three minutes. If you want to go over three minutes and everybody else has had a chance to speak, you can come back up after everybody else has had a turn. I'm not going to cut somebody off at 3:01, but just try to, if best as you can, try to keep it to three minutes so we can get to everybody's comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley McChesney. I am the mother of a fourth grade special needs student in Coochinella, and I'm here to talk about what I'm deeply concerned about inconsistencies going throughout the school district. My son is a very bright, curious, and deeply compassionate child who as by all of his teachers, including Ms. Rupert and Ms. Arietta, have been seen as a bright light in the classroom. He is neurodivergent and therefore does, like many of his other, many other children with diverse learning profiles, he benefits from structure and consistency and a team of adults who truly understand and who support him. And unfortunately, that consistency has been hard to come by. In the last three, last four years since I've been in this district, my son has had multiple teacher changes throughout the school year. Second grade, he had two teacher changes. Third grade, he had, again, two teacher changes. In this year alone, my son has four teacher changes. It's deeply concerning as a parent to hear that we are now reducing our staff of more special needs, special education teachers such as Ms. Rupert and Ms. Arietta, who both have been a part of my son's development and greatly improved each time. This should raise alarm to families, not just like mine, but everyone who believes in a child's right to access a meaningful education. Reducing support for neurodivergent learners does not save costs. It creates long-term gaps that affect educational equality and student mental health and classroom dynamics for everyone. We cannot allow students who think and learn differently to become afterthoughts in budget conversations or logistical planning. Their needs are not extra, they are essential, and when we get right to, when we get it right for them, we get it right for all kids. My son has shown me and everybody who's seen him how it My son has shown me and everybody who's seen him how it is possible with the support of educators like Ms. Rupert and Ms. Arietta that any challenge that comes to his mind and any challenge that he sees can be overcome and be nurtured in that way. He has taught me, like many of his teachers, that the brilliance does not always follow from a standard path, but sometimes it's a path, a new path entirely. This is more about than one child. It's more about how we as a community value inclusion, consistency, and the belief that every child deserves to be seen, supported, and thrived. And I can honestly say both those teachers have shown that to us, to him and every special needs student that they have ever come in contact with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cara Coppa, Long Valley resident and a mother of two students in this district, one of which was a student of Michelle Rupert's last year in her second grade class. And I just want to dovetail off of what Michelle Dornfeld was saying earlier in support of Michelle Rupert. I did send a big lengthy email, but I won't take up a lot of time, just a few words if I may. Ms. Rupert is the new Mr. Rogers. I feel like, right? I feel really that she is like a modern-day embodiment of kindness and patience and gentle strength. She's a real person who dedicates her life to the understanding and nurturing of children. And she's a breath of fresh air. Her smile's infectious and you can feel the warmth of her energy as it radiates as, you know, when you're in her presence. And I feel like Michelle Dornfeld kind of just used that same verbiage. I was talking to my twelve and eight-year-old girls last night about this a bit, without too much information. And when I asked them, both separately, what were some of the words that can describe Ms. Rupert, they overlapped quite consistently with kindness, caring, and fun. And my eight-year-old, you know, she had Ms. Rupert last year as a second-grade teacher, like I said, and she loved the silly songs and the rhymes that helped start her day in the best mood possible and ready to learn. And, you know, I think that really goes a long way and is a testament to how we can help children today. To sort of, you know, there's so much competition and so much focus on on education and sort of taking a step back and putting us in a more relaxed atmosphere. I think it just helps us, you know, these little ditties or these rhymes or whatever just really go a long way in helping us to make, remember things from math facts and blocks to behavioral choices in the hallway. So I really feel that Ms. Rupert here is a phenomenal ambassador to back and a radiant example of how Long Valley, you know, it takes a village community culture. And then having her part of our school is the best gift that I think we can give to our children and the direction that we should want to follow. It's not why. If that's not the direction that we want to go in, then where on earth are we going? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shannon Colditz, and my son goes to Coochinella. So my family is very devastated over the news of Mrs. Rupert losing her job. My son has her this year, and he has come such a long way because of her. She built up his confidence to make friends, to talk in front of the class, and to try the work even though it may be too hard for him. He went from barely knowing the alphabet to reading some books now. He has the confidence to make friends now. He will actually speak up in front of the class. She knows the needs of each of her students and addresses them to benefit each kid. My son loves her so much. He actually tried everything to be here tonight, but I didn't know if that would be okay. So my son loves her so much. The relationship that she has built with him is beautiful. She cares about her kids. She even shows up to after-school events, and she doesn't even have her own children in that school anymore. And she does that because she wants to show the students how much she cares. I really hope you guys see the overwhelming support that Mrs. Rupert has and how much she is loved. Please rethink the decision to part ways with her. Losing her is a huge loss for Coochinella, and we need her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Ficacci. I'm a mom with four children attending the district schools, one in Long Valley Middle School and three in Benedict A. Coochinella. I'm here tonight in support of Michelle Rupert. My daughter Stevie is currently a student in Mrs. Rupert's second-grade class. Last week, close your ears. Last week, Stevie and her classmates were asked to describe Mrs. Rupert using one word. They chose dedicated, helpful, funny, friendly, beautiful, nice, hardworking, caring, kind. I'm sorry. Loving, smart, and creative. Quite honestly, I don't think I could come up with a better list of words myself. Mrs. Rupert not only wants her students to do well, but she looks out for their well-being too. A few months ago, she sent me a note mentioning she noticed something about Stevie and asked if we could chat and offered her own personal time to do so. We ended up chatting for over an hour. The discussion just flowed, and Mrs. Rupert talked, and she listened, and she offered suggestions and strategies that would best fit Stevie. After hanging up, I remember thinking, wow, this she is more than a teacher, and she chose, and she truly cares about her students. Mrs. Rupert is innovative and knows how to engage her students. During Colonial Day, Mrs. Rupert, Mrs. Rupert's butter-making station was the place to be. She had each and every child entertained as she was dressed up in her own colonial wear herself, giving each child a turn in making butter. I'm not sure if you're aware, but on the Washington Township School website, there is a post about the seminar all of the new hires attended prior to the beginning of the 2024-25 school year. One of the highlights on your website shows asking them if they had to teach class on one thing, what would it be? Their answers were kindness and empathy, respect, mindfulness, and self-regulation, dedication and kindness, open-mindedness and growth mindset. I find it quite ironic you are choosing not to renew the contract for a teacher who teaches each and every one of these aspects and topics in her classroom each and every day. Mrs. Rupert's dedication and genuine care make her a high asset to our district and our children, and I feel any district would be lucky to have her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mara Segal. I'm Seven Lake Town Road. My child goes to Coochinella. And I come here really as an example of not a parent who's concerned, but an educator who's concerned. I've been an educator for fifteen years, and I have worked in districts that that do not value the experience of staff, and I know firsthand what that overlooked, what being overlooked, like what that overlooked experience looks like in, when you lose good people, how that looks later on in districts, and it's not good. I've seen firsthand what happens when you, when you lose good people, those with deep experience, strong evaluations, strong connections with students, which is obviously very clear within this room tonight. It doesn't just impact those who are directly affected. It hurts those as a whole community and ultimately the students. And although my son is not certified, not, how do I say? He's not classified. I know that how we treat all of our students, especially those with higher needs, affects every single one in the building. Right now, facing a reduction in force that threatens to take away support staff who have been obviously an integral part to the stability and success of these students. When we ignore the real needs of our students, those who, especially those who need more support, we're ignoring the needs of all students, a lack of consistency, which is pretty clear, and experienced staff affects everyone, not just the kids in those programs. It makes me uneasy as a parent, especially when I've seen that within districts I've worked in, and it's never good. We trust our educators to nurture our children, and when we see so much change and disruption, it undermines that trust and my trust as a parent. We can't, how can we expect our students to thrive when the system doesn't seem to prioritize the professionals who work so hard to support them? You may not see these impact of these decisions right now, but you will down the line. When we lose experienced staff, it creates instability, uncertainty that ripples through the entire system. It may not be immediate, but these are long-term consequences that will affect all of us. And when we fail to invest in the people who support our students, we fail to invest in the system, every child, every child deserves a stable and supportive environment, and the best way to ensure that is by retaining and supporting the people who clearly make that environment the best as possible. Just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura DePace, and I have a son and a daughter currently in the Coochinella School. My daughter had the privilege of having Michelle Rupert last year as her second-grade teacher. I cannot speak highly enough of Michelle's dedication, enthusiasm, and all-around care of each student that she has taught or in some way positively affected their lives. In a household where I and my husband have tried to create an atmosphere where we are curious, where we have a love of learning, my daughter having Michelle as a teacher made that easy. I feel like she created exactly that atmosphere in her own classroom. The enthusiasm that my daughter came home with each day was a breath of fresh air, and I feel like she did a lot of the hard work for me. Every time my daughter sees her, she has to say hello, give her a hug. She was, at the end of last year, visibly upset that she wouldn't see Michelle Rupert in the hallway anymore. A lot of the questions that she asked me was, Mama, will I see Mrs. Rupert in school? Can I still go say hi to her? Can I still go give her a hug? She had a great impact on her that lasts still to today. During a specific difficult time with a situation in my son's fourth-grade class last year, Michelle Rupert specifically emailed me, and I know many other parents as well, offering support and to look after my daughter as well as my son, knowing that it was a heavy and emotional time that affected not only her personal students, but the siblings of her students. Once again, just to show how she goes above and beyond her call. We moved here to Long Valley about thirteen years ago specifically because of the school systems and how amazing they were supposed to be. However, if getting rid of amazing teachers such as this woman behind me is the district's idea of a correct direction, then I would issue a warning to the district on the impact of this and the community as a whole. The impact of this will, that this will just have on Long Valley and the future of its school systems. Michelle Rupert is a light, a beautiful person, a beautiful woman, and a beautiful teacher. And this is a detrimental loss to the school and the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Lori Mulkington, and I'm a second-grade teacher at the Benedict A. Coochinella School. And I am also here tonight in support of Michelle Rupert, as you know, a second-grade teacher at our school whose exceptional contributions to our school and district have significantly impacted staff and students alike. I've had the privilege of teaching alongside Michelle for the past three years. Recently, she was notified that she will not be rehired for the next school year. Again, the reason given was that the district is moving in a different direction. As a teacher myself with more than twenty-five years of experience, it is clear to me that Michelle Rupert embodies all of the characteristics of an exceptional teacher. She is compassionate, intelligent, nurturing, flexible, motivating, creative, strong, and patient. She also has a wonderful sense of humor, and as you've heard, that smile plastered from ear to ear every single day. And for these reasons and many more, our children and staff need Michelle Rupert. Her continued presence would greatly enhance our educational community. From the day she walked through Coochinella's doors, Michelle Rupert has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty. Her dedication to fostering a positive learning environment is evident in her innovative teaching methods and the personalized attention she provides to each student. Mrs. Rupert actively engages her students in the curriculum, which inspires them to take ownership of their learning. Her students know that she is always cheering them on, and this unwavering dedication gives them the courage to take chances, work hard, and grow. Without a doubt, Michelle Rupert is dedicated to the well-being and success of every child. In addition to positively impacting her students, Michelle has built strong relationships with colleagues across grade levels, fostering a collaborative atmosphere that encourages professional growth and teamwork. Her willingness to share resources and strategies and create many countless resources has enriched our collective teaching practices, benefiting both new and veteran educators. Her advocacy has placed materials in the hands of her teammates to more effectively deliver instruction. Her energy and spirit of collaboration have created a supportive environment that enables us to thrive as a community of educators. The positive impact of Michelle Rupert on our students and staff is undeniable. The testimonials you've heard from parents and colleagues speak volumes about the influence she has had on all of our lives. In conclusion, I strongly urge you to consider the immense benefits that she brings to our school and district. Rehiring Michelle is not just a decision about employment. It is an investment in the future success of our students and the overall strength of our educational community. Thank you very much for hearing me. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
God help all of us because I came with no notes. My name is Sarah Ackerman. I have three children that are within the special education system at Coochinella. One of them is currently also in the middle school. The neurodivergent population, their community, their voice is not often heard. My daughter went through Coochinella with Mrs. Rupert. She is now in fourth grade. She's finishing up fourth grades, and she had her the year that Mrs. Rupert came in as a substitute teacher. I honestly didn't find out until tonight that she was a substitute. I had no idea. You would have never known. But to this day, my daughter, she struggles to go to school. She struggles with being accepted. She struggles with paying attention. She struggles to connect to the material. I can literally point to one teacher, and that is Mrs. Rupert, who helped turn that around for her. I beg you, please reconsider this decision. You have a job hosting for two teachers at Coochinella, and you're willing to let go of one who is phenomenal. And I think it's stupid. And I'm going to call it what it is, and I beg you guys to reconsider.
Thank you. Is there anybody else before? Okay, thanks.
What? What? Yeah, this is...
But you have to wait until she goes.
What?
I mean, normally, we let everybody else speak, and then if Mrs. Reslin's going to go again, we would like to hear from everybody first. That's typically the way that we like to construct a meeting.
It's not a change.
It's not a change.
No, it's not a change.
Jessica Toomey, kindergarten teacher at Old Farmers Road School. I would like to take a few minutes of my time up here to publicly read my letter of gratitude to Jenna Hoxwell for the service she has provided to our community, and more specifically, to the teachers, staff, children, and families at Old Farmers Road School for the past three years. Dear Jenna, Our journey in education together began a little over twenty-two years ago. At the time I was starting my family, I met you as my eternity leave replacement. I knew right away, as I spent time with you shadowing me to prepare to take over, that you have the passion and sparkle that a public school system is lucky to have. Knowing that you rose up to the top of the candidate list at a time and in a district that was extremely competitive twenty years ago, I felt at ease as I stepped to the side and you filled my first-grade teacher shoes. Almost twenty years later, our professional paths circled back to each other. Almost 20 years later, our professional paths circled back to each other. You had continued your career in education in the classroom and had grown to pursue work in administration. When a principal role was posted for Old Farmers Road School, you called me and shared that you were ready for your next steps. You were wondering about the culture and the needs of the Long Valley community, and what stood out to me in our conversation, and we hadn't spoken for 20 years, was that you were not asking for what you could gain from our district. You were trying to understand if we were a match for your service and leadership so that you could give. Our conversation left me quietly rooting for you from the sidelines, knowing that if we were lucky enough to get you, I would have the privilege of working for you. I remember our first staff meeting and the feel of every staff meeting since that captured your vision of leadership in a school. To paraphrase your words, you shared that you selected the path of administration so that you could be the principal that you would want as a teacher. You knew that if you took care of teachers, teachers could take care of our children, cared-for children would contribute to the support of families, and in turn, the system would care for the collective community. Your level of vision, compassion, support, rigorous expectation, and strength as a leader has been unparalleled in my experience. You modeled for us the balance of maintaining the heart of a teacher while offering leadership and guidance that lifts up children, teachers, and families. Your work is both a science and an art, and to have been under your professional care for the past three years has been an honor, and you have made me a better educator. While your next steps forward are a great loss for Old Farmers Road School and our district as a whole, I'm trying to shift my lens of sadness for myself and my colleagues to the happiness that I can feel for those who will gain your leaderships. Leadership. They don't even know it yet, but they're about to gain a teacher leader who will remind them each and every day through action and words why they chose education as their path. They will be lifted up, backed up, and supported in their professional growth as individuals and as a team. Your talents will be missed by those who work with you at Old Farmers Road School, but your positive impact and mark on us collectively will remain a part of why we show up each and every day as educators in the service of children in our care. It is my privilege to have known you from your beginning, to have grown with you in the middle, and to continue to celebrate you as you go on to change the world in your next professional steps with gratitude, appreciation, and deep respect. Jessica.
Thank you.
Holy crap, how do you even follow that? Taralago's 30 Zellers Road. Really proud educator at Old Farmers Road School. Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mrs. Jenna Hoxwell for her tireless commitment to Old Farmers Road School. And as look at several of you whose children she has touched in a very positive way, it's great, with great honor that I speak for myself today. Jess, I took your lead, and I couldn't really be this honest right now, but you're a much better person than I am. So I'm going to try to do what you do and be better. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for your leadership, and that's in bold. You'd never hesitated to jump into any situation, whether it be to cover my class when I have an emergency, to cover my lunch duty when I needed to attend an important meeting, provide support and guidance at lunch when a difficult student needed care and support, or to give me strength when in my darkest moments, the death of my mother, I felt that I couldn't push through. Because of your ability to lead by example, that too is in bold. I am a better educator, a better colleague, and a better member of our school community. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for your love, that too is in bold, your love for our Old Farmers Road School family. From the very first moment I met you, when I had the privilege of sitting on the interview committee, and nobody even matched our interview, by the way, I knew you were a terrific fit for us. Your smile, your genuine care for us, and ability to make us truly believe in ourselves has been transformative. Your ability to help us not take things so seriously, to trust in ourselves, and to support one another is one reason our school, Old Farmers, is what it is, and it's a family, and I don't apologize for it. It might sound trite, it might sound cliche, and I don't care, because it's true. That does not happen by accident. It is because of her love and her leadership of our family that we, here, a whole bunch of us, are able to share our love of teaching with the people who matter most, our students, your children, that we have the privilege and responsibility of teaching each and every Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for taking a chance on us, and yes, that is in bold, for leaving all that was comfortable, a tenured position, to step out into the unknown, a brand-new position in a new district, in a new place. That took incredible courage, but because you took a chance on us, we've had the pleasure of working alongside of you each day. We've had the privilege of working with you to educate these amazing children of ours, of yours, incredible they are. We've had the honor of seeing remarkable growth through some really freaking difficult times because, and again, this is bold, you took a chance on us. You helped us come together and create something that is incredibly special, a family of educators who love what they do, even though it's hard as hell sometimes. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for handling the tough times with grace. Grace is in bold. When things get crazy, as they surely do, and will, and have, we look at you, and amazingly, you were calm, you were cool, you were collected. Who could do that? Your grace, again bolded, told us everything would be okay, that we could and would make it through anything, that we truly got this. Now, we've had a lot of adults come up here, and I'm not sure who the teacher is, but God love you. Let me tell you, I wish my kids would have had you, and they had some freaking awesome teachers. You've heard from a lot of adults, but I'd like to share with you some sentiments from the kids. Not, they don't know about this, they have no idea that she's gone. They, for Valentine's Day, every year, do a "What I Like About You" for every classmate. Can be anonymous, they can sign their name. Every year, they do one for the principal, and this is what they had to say to Mrs. Hoxwell. "I like how kind you are, and how good you take care of our school. I love that you are a great leader. I like how you're always so kind. You're one of the good ones. I like how calm and happy you are. You're so helpful, and you always find solutions to problems. I like how nice you are to everyone, no matter who they are. I love how you make me happy with your smile. I like how you are super friendly and keep everyone safe, no matter who they are. I like how you help anyone who needs it. I like how you are always smiling. I like how you are always so kind, and that you keep our school safe and happy. I like how you always manage to make me feel better. I like how you always have time for us, no matter what you're doing. Thank you for that, and thank you for always making me feel special." From the mouths of babes, guys. We got to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Keldarol. I'm one of the teachers at Old Farmers. On behalf of our entire Old Farmers Road School community, I would like to express my heartfelt thanks to Mrs. Hoxwell for her leadership, dedication, and the positive impact she has made on our school. Mrs. Hoxwell led with integrity, compassion, and vision, and her contributions have shaped not only the success of our students, but the strength of our staff and the spirit of our school culture, which is fantastic. Whether navigating challenges or celebrating achievements, her steady presence has always been a source of reassurance to the students and the staff, and an inspiration. While we're saddened to see Mrs. Hoxwell go, we are incredibly grateful for her time, her energy, and her heart that she has given. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for everything.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Secone, first-grade teacher, Old Farmers Road School. Good evening, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight to recognize and thank someone who has had a tremendous impact on our school community, our principal, Mrs. Hoxwell. For the past three years, Mrs. Hoxwell has led our school with a rare combination of strength, compassion, and clarity. She brought knowledge, but more than that, she brought action, always offering strategies and supports that were grounded in what actually works for kids. Mrs. Hoxwell never just acknowledged a problem, she offered solutions. She's been an unwavering advocate for both students and teachers. Teachers felt seen and heard under her leadership. If you came to her with a concern, you knew you were entering a conversation, not a criticism. She was approachable, honest, and proactive, always willing to listen, always ready to help us move forward. Her ability to communicate and connect with staff, with students, and with families created a school culture rooted in respect and collaboration. Students saw her as someone who understood them, believed in them, and truly enjoyed being around them. And we, as educators, knew we had a leader who didn't just talk about support. She lived it. Mrs. Hoxwell didn't throw problems back at teachers. She stood beside us, offering insights and guidance. Her leadership wasn't about command and control. It was about partnership, and her steady optimism helped us be our best. She is adaptable, solutions-oriented, and above all, deeply dedicated. She made our school a better place, not by doing it all herself, but by empowering all of us to do our best work. So tonight, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxwell, for your service, your leadership, and your heart. You have made a lasting difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. My name is Hillary Harvey, and I am the school psychologist at Old Farmers Road School. I have worked in the district for 20 years and have worked with several administrators. When Mrs. Jenna Hoxwell announced the news to her staff, there was not a dry eye in the house. On behalf of Old Farmers Road School, we want to know, we want you to know how much we love Jenna. We have been very sad for these reasons. We keep going because that's we, how we are, resilient. I have worked with a variety of different principals throughout my 30 years as a school psychologist. Never have I had one who knew the students' names, anticipated their every need, who was hands-on, supported her staff, always says, "Thank you for all you do." She supported students, families, and even came to many meetings, as many meetings as she could. Her assemblies have been the best I've ever seen. Everyone plays a part. She watches classrooms giving teachers breaks and loves greeting the students in the front with me and other staff members, which some of you see me there. With every new initiative, she works hands-in-hand with staff so they'd be more comfortable and knowledgeable moving forward. She serves as an instructional leader who is well-respected by her staff. She teaches me so much about technology since I'm so old-school. She makes me feel like I'm part of the leadership team at Old Farmers Road School, and I have the privilege of working side-by-side through many situations, and I look up to her as our fearless leader. That's what she is, fearless. She advocates for the students and staff like no other. I want to thank Jenna for being who she is, she should never, ever change. The staff, students, and community who get to work alongside Mrs. Hoxwell next are the luckiest ones. She's always appreciative of everyone and lets them know. There are staff who transferred to Old Farmers Road School for Jenna's leadership. Even at our mandatory staff meetings, Jenna makes it fun for us with scavenger hunts, team-building activities, which keeps morale positive in our building. We are happy at Old Farmers Road School under Jenna's leadership. Anyone who steps into OFRS says they notice the comfortable and family-like atmosphere. We are a family. She's so family-oriented, caring, understanding, funny, sensitive, kind, and intelligent. Jen is great at what she does, always with a smile. She's an active listener and allows staff to contribute their ideas. My adult kids are going into the education field, and my hope is that they will have a principal with Jenna's characteristics. What is our schools and community lost will be another schools and communities gained. She's an asset to wherever she lands, and she will be missed. I will never forget the laughter and the tears. She's such a smart lady, too, an incredible woman. It's been a privilege working alongside a passionate educator who chooses what's best for all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fran Spino, first-grade teacher, Old Farmers Road School. To Mrs. Jenna Hoxwell, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your guidance, support, and brainstorming sessions, your amazing leadership, but thank you doesn't really cover it. Jenna, you have helped in the classroom, as well as the conference room and the hallways. Thank you for seeing us, hearing us, but most importantly, supporting us. I have watched you help our littlest students as they struggle to get to their classes in the morning. I've watched you help our older students who struggle with their emotional problems in school as well. Age, grade, abilities, it didn't matter. You stopped, you knew names, you knew how to help, and you did. You helped me grow as a teacher, and for that, I couldn't thank you enough. You have come into my classroom and helped brainstorm ways to fit 23 students and two teachers in an oddly-shaped room that barely fits 18. You have come into our room and showed us any lesson we needed help with. You were more than willing to come in and teach. Thank you for sharing your heart, your experience, and your love of teaching with all of us. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Hi. Megan Prizuti, 30 Nestling Drive. I'm a fourth and fifth-grade teacher at Old Farmers. I'm standing here today to express my heartfelt thanks to Mrs. Hoxwell, principal of Old Farmers Road School. In my very short experience as a teacher at her school, I witnessed firsthand the exceptional leadership, dedication, and care that she brings to our school community each and every day. I have also learned that this is and has always been the norm at Old Farmers since Jenna started three years ago. Jenna is not only an outstanding administrator, but also a compassionate advocate for both students and staff. She creates a welcoming and inclusive environment where students feel seen, supported, and encouraged to reach their full potential. Her open-door policy, consistent communication, and genuine concern for the well-being of students and staff members makes Old Farmers Road School a very, very special place to be. She is known for her unwavering support for teachers. She's created a collaborative school culture built on trust and mutual respect, which empowers us as teachers to be innovative and to grow professionally. The positive energy that Jenna brings to our school is both fulfilling and contagious. Under her leadership, our school has not only excelled academically, but has also become a stronger, more united community, and even a family. I'd like to thank her for taking a chance on me, an 11-year primary educator in the district, and giving me the opportunity this year to step into the role as a fourth- and fifth-grade teacher, where I feel excited, I feel rejuvenated again, and I feel extremely happy. I'm truly grateful for her trust, and I'm so excited to grow in my new position. and I wish that she would be here to see it. However, she's done such tremendous things for our school, and I have no doubt that she will continue to do so as she enters on, enters into her next adventure. So thank you for everything you have done for our school. You will absolutely be missed.
Thank you.
My name is Patty Reslin, and I am a health and physical education teacher at Old Farmers Road School. As an educator with over 27 years of experience across three different school districts in two different states, I've had the privilege of working with many talented leaders. However, none can match the exceptional leadership of Jenna Hawxwell. Leadership is not just about managing tasks, it's about inspiring people and creating a vision for the future. Jenna has done this with grace and determination. Her dedication is evident in the smiles of our students and the confidence of our staff. Her departure is not just a loss for our school, but a loss for our entire community. Jenna embodies the qualities we strive for in education leadership. She is tough but fair, a good listener who generally cares for her students and staff. She has fostered an environment where everyone feels valued and respected. It is rare to find a leader who treats all staff as professionals and creates a supportive atmosphere. Under her guidance, we have built strong relationships, and we have thrived as a team. Her open-mindedness, her open-mindedness has allowed us to explore new ideas and approaches. She encourages us to voice our thoughts and contributions to our growth as educators. It is this level of commitment and care that makes her an irreplaceable asset to our school. As we gather here tonight, we must ask ourselves why the Washington Township Board of Education is letting Jenna Hawxwell resign. This decision raises critical questions about the direction in which Washington Township Schools is headed. This decision does not reflect the needs of our students or the desire of our staff. Are we willing to sacrifice exceptional leadership for the sake of change? I urge this community to reflect deeply on this matter. If we are truly prioritizing the best interests of our students, let us recognize the value of strong leadership like Jenna's and advocate for the continuity, the continuity that our students deserve. We are losing a great educator and a remarkable leader who has dedicated her time and life to ensuring that every student has the opportunity to succeed. Let us advocate for Jenna's return. Let us show our support, and together, we can ensure that our school continues to thrive under her leadership it deserves. With, for all these reasons or more, I urge you to reconsider any thoughts of allowing Jenna to, Hawxwell, to resign and rehire her. Thank you.
I really wasn't going to speak, but I was a nurse at Old Farmers Road School, nurse, 23 years. I went through four principals, and I thought they were all great in their own way. Jenna Hawxwell came along, and I was like, just floored. Easy to talk to, listened, extremely fair, cared about the children, the families, the staff, evidence-based interventions. She would bring them to meetings. I attended many meetings, 504 Child Study Team. As a resident of Long Valley and a former contributor to the greatness of Old Farmers Road School, I think that you should plead for her to stay and come back to Old Farmers Road School. Where opinion outweighs performance, that's scary. She's a fabulous, fabulous leader and principal. Big mistake. Big.
You got it now, okay.
Switch my shirt. Other hat. Does anyone else, I did time it, it's a little bit longer, but I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else who has a public comment tonight on agenda items?
I timed myself, it was three and a half minutes. I'll try to do it a little faster. Okay. Good evening, members. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Lind, and members of the community. I am the school counselor, this, this is from Jessica Solko. I am the school counselor and social worker of Flocktown Cosman Elementary School. I would like to write a little bit that reflects my close to 15 years at Flocktown Cosman School. Our school's motto at FKS is "Leading the Way and Making a Difference." This is not just a motto, but it's a philosophy that we, as Flocktown Cosman educators, strive to instill in our students every single day, preparing them to become confident, compassionate, and productive members of our community. For the past 15 years, I have had the privilege of serving the students of Flocktown Cosman Elementary as both their social worker and their school counselor. Until a couple of years ago, I worked alongside another wonderful social worker who was responsible for the Cosman Building while I was at Flocktown. Each building houses a little over 250 students, including one of the special education programs with the neediest, wait, sorry, while I was at Flocktown, each building houses over 250 students, including one of the special ed programs with the neediest special ed education students academically, cognitively, socially, and behaviorally. When my colleague was reassigned to meet the growing needs of the preschool special ed population in our district, I remained to serve over 500 students in general education while expecting to maintain an increasing student caseload in special education as their case manager and social worker. American School Counselors Association recommends a ratio for school counseling in a school is 250 to one counselor per school. Nationally, the ratio is 376 to one counselor. I was deemed to do both jobs, counselor and social worker, at Flocktown Cosman School. In addition to daily crisis support, I was responsible, responsible for implementing our multi-tiered system of supports, co-leading our PBIS behavioral system, including student initiatives and recognition assemblies, peer leadership, delivering classroom character education, managing and attending to an increased number of supplementary referrals to 504 plans and an IRS meetings for general education students, nearly close to 100 in total, and serving as a constant source of support to teachers, students, families, and overall staff. I've gone above and beyond for my students in ways such as meeting them at their homes or cars to make sure they can get to school or staying after school, making sure they were, would get home safely to their parents. I worked alongside their parents to make sure their child felt safe and comfortable at school. Whether it was guiding a student through a serious threat assessment crisis or offering a simple hug or high five to cheer up a student during recess, I was fully committed to our school community each and every single day. I take great pride in my ability to build meaningful relationships with our students, their families, and Flocktown Cosman staff. This rapport is crucial to the success and development of our children. I have always focused on creating a safe and supportive environment, one where every child feels respected and seen and valued despite me being in two buildings at Flocktown Cosman Schools. I respectfully want to clarify that this recent decision to eliminate my school's social worker slash counselor position through a reduction in force was based solely on budgetary limitations, not performance. I remain deeply committed to this mission of, to the mission of the district and at Flocktown Cosman School, the success of every student I have served. As I reflect on my time at Flocktown Cosman School, I remain proud of the difference I've made and the lives I've touched. While my position may no longer exist, my hope is that my service stands as a lasting example of what it truly means to lead the way and make a difference as our Flocktown Cosman School motto states. I've always strived to be a role model of leading the way and making a difference for our students, for our staff, and for our community we serve. Thank you for your consideration and support. That's from Jessica.
Thank you. Just to be sure, is there anybody else for public comment on agenda items? You know, we greatly value everybody's comments tonight. It means a lot to us. As I mentioned before, you know, we really can't comment on personnel or student matters. So I, you know, as much as we would like to be able to talk to you guys, it's not something we can really get into as a board in this forum. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything else to that, or?
Boards typically do not comment on personnel items.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, I'm making a motion to approve the April 29th, 2025 executive session meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? And then, a motion to approve the April 29th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any abstentions? Okay. Moving on to the reorganization meeting, part of the agenda. So first, I'm going to make the motion to approve the following annual appointments. We have appoint purchasing agent, appoint insurance agents of record, appoint school medical inspector, appoint auditor of record, appoint the architect of record, financial advisor slash disclosure agent, right-to-know contact person, affirmative action officer and team, appoint whistleblower contact person, appoint the district liaison and designated child welfare authorities, appoint Title IX coordinator, appoint new teacher mentor coordinator, appoint district education stability liaison, appoint McKinney Vento homeless liaison, appoint the district ESL coordinator, appoint the school safety specialist, appoint the anti-bullying coordinator, appoint the anti-bullying specialist, appoint the custodian of records, public agency compliance officer, section 504 officer, the indoor air quality coordinator, the integrated pest management coordinator, and appoint the asbestos slash HARA coordinator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Mr. Waskus? Mrs. Bratton? Mr. Holly? Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. And then next, the annual motions and designations. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertising bids for goods and services, opening of bids, designation of transfer authority, adopt the district job descriptions, authorize entities for investment purposes, designate official board newspapers, authorize the use of state contracts, approve tax aduity programs and 457B companies, approve chart of accounts, authorize participation in shared services programs, authorize sale of surplus equipment, approve annual tuition rates, approve principal evaluation instrument, approve the teacher evaluation instrument, approve the curriculum as stated, anticipated contracts to be renewed, awarded, or to expire. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly? Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Moving on to education, can I please have somebody move education?
Education would like to make a motion to move items number one through four.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Can I please have, can somebody please move finance?
Finance would like to move items five through 16 on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Can I please have somebody move personnel? Do we have a second? Or is there any, wait, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, and Jen, I think your mic was off, just so you know. Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Yes. Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus? Yes. Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Personnel would like to make a motion to move items 18 through 34 on the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Yes. Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Next, we have a motion to read for the second time to approve the policies under agenda item number 35.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Yes. Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to read for the first time the policy under agenda item number 36.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ryan? Yes. Mrs. DeSico? Mr. Catano? Mrs. Succi? Yes. Mr. Waskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton? Yes. Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Oldmixon?
Yes. Is there any unfinished business? New business, I'm going to give just the floor in just a second. Just for the board's benefit, and I guess everybody here, our next board meeting on June 17th is going to be held at Cucinella. The reason for this is that LVMAs is scheduled to have electrical upgrades the night that we're supposed to have the board meeting here. And additionally, it will be recorded, but likely not livestreamed due to complications with that, so just wanted to, I don't know if everybody on the board was aware of that, it was something that happened recently, so figured I'd say it here for the public to hear as well, so. Jess?
Not that I really need it, but thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It is nice to see people actually show up, no matter what your opinions are. Thank you for caring. I'd like to take a few moments under new business to share some exciting news from the recent Morris County School Boards Association meeting, as well as propose an ongoing opportunity to keep our community informed about regional and legislative developments. This week, last week, I had the privilege of attending a remarkable meeting that included our annual Unsung Hero Award Ceremony, county board elections, and certification ceremony, as well as a heartfelt tribute to Charlene Peterson, Morris County's NJSBA representative, who is retiring after many years of dedicated service. One of the highlights of the evening was the announcement that we raised over $26,000 in scholarships through the efforts of local businesses and thanks to the advocacy of the MCSBI, Morris County School Boards Association. These funds are supported 10 unsung heroes, exceptional 12th-grade students who have overcome significant challenges such as serious illness, the loss of a parent, or language barriers. Despite these hardships, they have excelled academically and served as beacons of kindness and empathy within their schools. In addition to that, we celebrated eighth-grade scholarship recipients chosen by Sheriff Gannon, as well as several SA-based scholarships awarded to high school seniors preparing for their future careers. I believe it's important to share these kinds of moments with our board and our community, and I'd like to propose using new business section of our agenda to provide updates from the county meetings and conferences that any of us happen to attend. These events are often, offer valuable insights and sharing that we can learn and keep in our district to help us all keep connected and informed. I'm very honored to share that I was also sworn in as second vice president of legislation for the Morris County School Boards Association. In this role, I plan to provide regular updates on legislative developments and advocacy initiatives affecting public education. I believe this information will help us better anticipate changes and support our students and staffs more effectively. I'm also proud to recognize Rob Waskus, who has achieved both a certified board member certification and master board certification. This is a significant accomplishment, not only for Rob personally, but for our board as a whole. Out of roughly 280 board members across Morris County's 40- Out of roughly 280 board members across Morris County's 40 districts, only 33 hold this certification, and by next year, Rob will join me as one of just 20 board members to have his certified board leader certification. To earn these credits requires completing 60 hours of credits, attending multiple delegate and county meetings, participating to conferences, and successfully passing an exam. These achievements reflect a deep commitment to governance and continued improvement. Finally, I'd like to report that our board as a whole is among only 15 in the county to hold our Carol E. Larson Board Certification, and just one of 13 with an active governance committee. Morris County continues to lead the state in the number of certified boards, the Carol E. Larson Certification, the master board members, and the certified board leaders, which is something we should all take great pride in and which is a big accomplishment thanks to Charlene Peterson. These milestones highlight the hard work and dedication of our board and community, and I look forward to continuing to share these successes as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more thing for new business, actually.
Sure. And after you, I have one other thing as well, so.
I'd like to propose the concept of having a committee or a working group to get out in front of what we all know is likely going to happen with the approval of the developments in the town. So for those of you who may not know, the town committee recently approved a development at the bottom of Newburgh Road, which could be up to as many as 400 houses, and then they also approved or are going to rezone it to be approved, another development with another 150 houses at the bottom of Kings Highway. And I think it'd probably be smart for the school, the superintendent, to get out in front and to put a working group together with the stakeholders and the teachers and parents to try and figure out how we're going to manage that, because logistically, it seems like all those kids would likely end up having to go to Flocktown. And, you know, I just heard a teacher mention earlier that there was, you know, a first grade class with 23 students in it. So I just think that'd probably be smart for us to kind of lean forward and get ahead of that and try and manage the difficulties that we all know are going to come with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to chime in. I don't know the stages of the development, but it's definitely, you know, if it is coming our way, we do need to get prepared for it. I don't know if anybody has a suggestion.
So just to be clear, you're suggesting like an ad hoc committee?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, because there's... It just... There's no way conceivably, if you're going to build 400 houses at the bottom of Newburgh and another 150 at the bottom of Kings Highway, all those kids can't possibly go to Flocktown. So you're talking about redistricting and class sizes. I, you know, I think there's a lot of... There's a lot of discussion that has to happen from... And I'm sure the parents are going to want to pay attention to class sizes. So, you know, I think that's probably worth having a discussion and getting an ad hoc committee or however we structure it to get the stakeholders in the community to start preparing for what the committee has done.
So as per our policy, you just have to follow the procedures to create an ad hoc committee, in which you'd have to basically clear it with the board president, and then you'd need to solicit interest from all board members, and you'd have to name a chairman. So it's just like an additional committee, like education and finance, and... But it's just a committee that's not a standing committee. So it's something that will address something that might be not something permanent like finance or education.
Is it only open to the board, or can we have teachers and parents and other?
An ad hoc committee is just board members.
Is there anything kind of like what he's suggesting or not so much?
Not to my knowledge.
Not currently.
I mean, I think we could add it as an agenda item in every single one of our existing committees, because it's going to touch every existing committee, right? So finance, you know, we could have like an ongoing standing, you know, and what can we do? How can we intervene? What can... How can we, you know, just kind of have it as like a, you know, must discuss in every committee, how that would impact each of our... You know, how is that going to impact personnel? How is it going to impact finance? All of that, and see where we go from there, and see how we can involve the community, how we can all participate.
Yeah, and I mean, there's been development all over New Jersey. I don't know if it's not a bad idea just to see how other boards have navigated this in the past, because it's... We're not exclusive to this. So, you know, I'm open to ideas. I don't think it's a terrible idea. I think if... I just... I'm confused on the timeline. I don't think anybody really knows. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be some... I don't want to say anything, but, I mean, speculating that it's not... It's not going to be here next year, obviously, but...
Right.
I mean, it's...
I think starting those discussions would be helpful.
I mean, to Jen's point, it's certainly something that's going to be discussed in committees going forward, whether we need an ad hoc committee to address specific concerns. I think time will tell. But like you said, John, I think we're pretty far to the left of this currently, so I'm not sure what an ad hoc committee, other than some potential brainstorming, would even discuss.
Also, to add to that, it was a topic of casual conversation among board members at the Morris County Unsung Hero Award Ceremony, so we could, again, just reach out to other members in different boards. I plan on doing so to get a legislative advocacy committee together. I could add that to my agenda.
I mean, it's not a bad idea. I think any knowledge and any help we can get is, you know, just to be as prepared as possible would be beneficial, so. Okay. One other thing on new business that I forgot. I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved that the Washington Township Board of Education, here and referred to as the Board, hereby modifies the HIB determination in him case 20250401-F, which was the subject of an appeal hearing before the Board on May 13th, and authorizes the notification of the Board's decision to affect the student's parent... To the affected student's parents, sorry.
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Ryan. Going to abstain. Mrs. DeSico. Mr. Catano. Mrs. Succi. Mr. Waskus. Mrs. Bratton. Mr. Hawley. Mr. Oldmixon.
Yes. Is there any other new business? Moving on to public comment on all items. Again, this is public comment on all items. Please approach the microphone and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I just have a question about personnel. 23, motion to approve addendum to the Administrator Association Agreement.
Is there any other public comment? What's that?
Yeah, I mean, it's... So it's pretty straightforward. It's a... There were two members of that association who received a stipend for doing certain duties, but that has now been adjusted so that those duties are now part of their job descriptions, and it's no longer called a stipend. It's now included in the base salary, but the change in actual compensation is... No change in compensation, right? So it's really just taking something that was called a stipend, which is probably not the best term for it, and rolling into their salaries and then making it part of their job descriptions permanently as opposed to a stipend.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to district distinctions. On curriculum news, Parent University, which was the first of many, was held on April 30th. It was designed to help parents feel more confident in preparing their children for the upcoming New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. A big thank you to Dave Jones and Erica Sanzagi for their time and expertise. We hosted a multilingual bingo night on May 8th at the Washington Township Library. This event was sponsored by the Parent Outreach Committee to partner with and support multilingual families within our Washington Township school community. The eighth grade students showcased bingo in Spanish, Hebrew, Hungarian, and French, and at the end of the activity, all participants were invited to share their native language with the audience. It was delightful to hear the diversity of languages and cultures in the Washington Township community. A special thank you to Jeanette Zetta for her dedication to our students and promoting pride and culture. On special education, we have been informed that the Washington Township Special Education Parent Advisory Group, CPAG, co-chaired by Jackie Rockowitz and Sarah Cippeletti, have been selected as the 2025 recipient of the Debbie Esposito Parent and Family Engagement Award. Our group was selected among 400 CPAG groups in the state. This is the second year of this special award in honor of former Start Project Director Debbie Esposito. Each year, they recognize a CPAG that demonstrates exemplary partnership between families and districts. On June 12th, the district is invited to attend the June SSEAC meeting, where the district will be presented with our award. At Cucinella, the musical performances for our grades K and first grade, under the loving direction of Mrs. Pastego, the students showcased their talents with confidence, joy, and infectious enthusiasm. She arranged the individual homeroom performances so family and friends could see their students show off their musical talents in a small intimate setting. And we're proud of our young performance, and a huge thank you goes out to Mrs. Pastego for all the hard work behind the scenes, participating with the students for these performances. Additionally, on April 30th, the therapy dogs visit. Our school was filled with joy and calm on Wednesday thanks to special visit from our furry friends. In partnership with the seeing eye, the Long Valley Junior Women's Club, therapy dogs Vista, Ziti, and Thistle stopped by to spend time with our students. The gentle affection and comforting presence of these dogs brought a sense of peace and happiness to everyone they met. A huge thank you to Naomi Yank, I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly, and the volunteer handlers for making this meaningful experience possible. Our students were glowing with excitement. Flocktown Cosman is thrilled to recently be announced as the second place winner in the Morris County 2025 School Spirit Contest, and huge congratulations to the following Flocktown Cosman students who participated and received distinctions in the Continental Mathematics League. Preston Ledwith, Isabella Tang, Mila de Medonza, Kazimir Tang, Max Thompson, Ethan Russ, Ellie Tang, and Andrew Braun. Old Farmers students enjoyed an inspiring assembly sponsored by the PTO, led by a high-energy New York City dance crew that has visited over 2,000 schools nationwide. Through dance, music, and powerful skits, the performers shared important messages about respect, responsibility, anti-bullying, and setting goals. This engagement program empowered students to make positive choices and support a respectful school community. And this Friday, in coordination with the PTO, we are excited to host our annual school fair, a tradition that brings families together for a day of fun and community spirit. Children and families will bring dunk tank, games, goldfish prizes, food trucks, waterfront, balloon animals, inflatables, and more. And foreshadowed last board meeting, the LVMS Spring Musical recently performed three fantastic productions of Frozen Junior for an audience in the LVMS Performing Arts Center. Our stage crew, tech crew, and cast performed beautifully and entertained guests, young and old, with their performances, and a big thank you to all. The eighth grade social studies teachers hosted a Local American Veterans Association of Washington Township post 1776, and Mayor Marino of Washington Township to meet with all eighth grade students last week. The students enjoyed listening to stories of the veterans, experience experiences, and learning about the proper folding of a U.S. flag. As part of the student civics unit, students also met with Mayor Marino where they learned about the mayor's duties, as well as the structure of the Washington Township's government. Thank you to Mayor Marino and the veterans for joining us, and our eighth grade teacher professionals for organizing. And lastly, big thanks to Mrs. Gateley and the tech crew with their successful support of the NJSLA testing this past week. The team repaired Chromebooks so that the students were ready for NJSLA. And additionally, our district's poster printer is up and running. The tech team ran training, and staff is using it successfully to increase communication throughout the district. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.